Good evening. We call our Monday, July 25, 2016 Board of Education East China School District order. We'll start with a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance, please.
Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is items of interest, recognition, and inquiry. Board of Education members, anybody have anything?
I just have one short announcement. I'm sure most of you know, but since we recognized our retirees at the last meeting, we've had one other one, and it was Eric Lunguski, and he was the science teacher at Marine City High for a gazillion years. I've known Eric like forever. We did our master's programs together, and he was also president of the teachers' union. So congratulations to Eric, but he will be missed.
There goes. Dr. Skolka.
Well, we're in summer, so there's not a whole lot of activity with student recognition at the moment, but a week from today, August 1st, we will once again be hosting Kagan Cooperative Learning Strategies at St. Clair Middle School, and we have well over 75 staff members from across the county, close to 50 of our own teachers coming back early to improve their own, to improve their performance, and we're really excited about that and thank them for taking the initiative to grow in their teaching and learning.
Just since it's summer, just a quick question to you. How was our summer food lunch program today?
Better today, because today was the first day of elementary summer school. So we had probably well over 100 little elementary students in summer school, and we make sure that we kind of guide them into the cafeteria before we send them home. But overall, very well, and we continue to want to encourage anyone of school age, regardless of whether you go to East China schools or not, you are welcome to participate. It is a free lunch program provided at Marine City Middle School.
Awesome. Thank you.
Is it still at East China Park also?
It is, though I think-
I think their program ended last Friday.
Oh, does it coincide with their summer rack?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Next item, item number three, organizational items. Appointment of executive secretary. Per administration recommendation, the Board of Education approves Superintendent Dr. Stephen Skolka as executive secretary to the board and direct that he post proper notice and of all meetings as given. Motion needed?
I'll move.
Move.
Support.
Second, comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So carried. Appointment of legal counsel. Recommended action. Per administration recommendation, the Board of Education approves through-in law firm as legal counsel. Motion needed?
So moved.
Mr. Kenickbauer?
Support.
Mrs. Murphy? Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So carried. Designation of newspaper for public notices. Recommendation action. Per administration recommendation, the Board of Education designate The Times Herald and The Voice for public notices. Motion needed?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Dislerath?
Support.
Support. Mrs. Bebuck? Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So carried. Authorization for investment of surplus funds. The administration is recommending that the Board authorize the executive director for finances designated agent of the treasurer to invest surplus funds of the district in accordance with Act 87 of the Public Acts of 1979, following generally accepted business practices and in the best interest of the district. Motion is needed?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kenickbauer?
Support.
Support. Mrs. Bebuck? Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So moved. Waiver of tax collection interest. Recommended action. Administration is recommending that for the 2016-17 fiscal year, the Board will not require payment of interest earned on taxes collected on behalf of the school district by the various municipal units of the district. Provided such taxes collected are remitted on the following scheduled date. Detroit Edison property taxes remitted upon receipt. All other property taxes remitted bi-weekly. Motion is needed?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Bebuck?
Support.
Support by Mrs. Murphy?
Mrs. Frank.
Mrs. Frank, I'm sorry. Too soft. Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So moved. Designation of depositories for school. Recommended action. Administration is recommending that the following institutions be designated as official depositories of the district, and that the individuals holding the positions named be authorized as signators on each account listed. Official depositories Charter 1, Chase, Comerica, Fifth Third Bank, Talmer Bank &amp; Trust, Flagstar Bank, Merrill Lynch, Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, Morgan Stanley Smith Barney, North Star Bank, Bank of America, Huntington Bank, Bank of New York. Checking accounts, sinking fund, treasurer and president. Building and site, treasurer and president. Payroll account, treasurer and president. General fund account, treasurer and president. Debt retirement account, treasurer and president. Cafeteria fund, executive director or superintendent. Internal account, executive director or superintendent. Marine City High School internal account, principal, executive director or superintendent. Marine City Middle School internal account, principal, executive director or superintendent. St. Clair High School internal fund, principal, executive director or superintendent. St. Clair Middle School internal account, principal, executive director or superintendent. A motion is needed?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Dislerath.
Support.
Support by Mr. Kenickbauer. Comments or questions?
I have a question. Yep, I have a question. How often do we, do we review the depositories as far as, are we allowed to shop interest rates or rates on any of our deposits? How often do we conduct, you know, an investigation of this?
Good evening. By keeping all those depositories on as an approved depository, it allows us to change the banks as needed throughout the year if needed. Right now, the North Star Bank is our main, like, deposits and checks are issued out of there, but we do look for the best interest rate. Like, right now, we're utilizing Flagstar and North Star Bank. We discontinued any monies at Talmer Bank because they weren't paying any interest in the last year, but if it turns out that ACD rates would increase, as they do communicate to us on a routine basis, we could transfer monies over to that bank.
Okay. Talmer Bank is being sold. I don't know if you're aware of that.
I did know that.
Excuse me, Chemical.
Really?
And then what about credit unions? Are they competitive at all?
I don't believe we're allowed to use them.
We're not allowed to? Okay. And then how are they, how do they communicate with us as far as if their interest rates increase or decrease? Because I know some of these banks, they do offer incentives. I mean, how do you keep up with that?
They come through with emails, like Talmer Bank, which is soon to be Chemical. I get a rate sheet every Monday. It'll come through their changes in their rates.
Oh, okay, so you do get something-
I can't say I get it from every single bank. Like, some of these depositories, the Huntington Bank, that is the bank that our bond payments flow through, so I think we have like-
They're one of the ones that offer a lot of the incentives, Huntington. Okay, thank you.
But that's our debt, payments are made through them, and that's the sole reason why we utilize them right now. Bank of New York-
I'm sorry.
-is the same.
Bank of New York, what do we do with them?
We make our 2009 bond payments through them, because that was the bank that we sold the bonds through, and so they were the, just the transitional bank. But some of these I have not seen, like the Merrill Lynch, I have not seen them in any records in the last three years. Not to say that we are not, we may not use them, but I haven't seen them in any of the records.
So when Talmer becomes Chemical Bank, we won't be able to use that, or that takes the place of on this list?
It would replace it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So carried. Adoption of a regular meeting, monthly meeting schedule. Per administration recommendation, the Board of Education adopt the regular meeting schedule as shown on page five. Motion is needed?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Frank?
Support.
Moved by Mrs. Bebuck?
That's okay.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So carried. Our consent agenda. Approval of minutes. Regular Board of Education meeting, June 27, 2016. Approval of payment of bills. Financial statement. Schedule of investments. Motion is needed?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Kenickbauer, supported by Mr. Dislerath. Comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So carried. Recognition of persons wishing to address the Board. I have no green cards. We welcome everyone, and thank you for coming. Report, Superintendent Report. Dr. Steve Skolka, Michigan Education Finance Study.
Thank you, President Bewar. In May 2015, a school finance study was commissioned by the legislature as part of a deal that was made between the legislature and the governor in order to get Proposal 1, which was the road funding proposal on the ballot at that time. Money was set aside in the fiscal year 16 budget for that study. In late June of this year, a report that was entitled Michigan Education Finance System was presented by the firm of Augenblick, Pelik, and Associates, who won the competitive bid to do that study. The findings of the report included that Michigan is underfunding the basic cost of education, and that there is significantly more variation in per pupil revenues and expenditures across the state than is desirable for an equitable school finance system. All indications are that the legislature has little interest of doing anything with this report, and I'm asking you tonight to pass a resolution calling for the legislature to hold open hearings on the report, a report to which the legislature paid, allocated, I don't know how much they paid, but they allocated $500,000 for this report, and I believe that, again, it's not really seeing the light of day, and we should at least contact the members of our own delegation and all the members on the House and Senate Education Committees to say, for you as a board, to say, hold public hearings on this report.
Do we have a copy of that study?
I've provided it to you as a link, because it is quite sizable. I can do that again.
Is that something that we could also perhaps post on our website, or somehow allow, to get the general public aware of what's going on, so maybe we can get a little bit more noise behind us on this?
I think that along with the resolution tonight, we can post both the resolution and a link to the study tomorrow, so that it shows not only the report, but your support of the report and your request that the legislature actually move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know how long the study took?
Well, again, it was in, it probably took close to a year, would be my guess, because they set it up to be paid out of fiscal year 16, which just ended. They released the report at the very end of June, kind of when, I mean, I hate to say it this way, not a whole lot of folks are paying attention, everybody's off on summer. The legislature itself was off on break, right?
Why they did it? Well, and I think with this being an election year, it would behoove us to get the information to the public.
So if I'm correct, Mrs. Varvo has provided, President Bewar, a copy of the resolution to be read as part of the action item.
Thank you.
When we get there.
Okay, great. Okay. 2016-17 school calendar?
Yep. Thank you again. We continue to meet with the ECEF, the East China Education Foundation, working towards a new collective bargaining agreement. A school calendar is collectively bargained, with the exception of the first day of school and those dates that are December holiday break and spring break, which are set as part of the county calendar. Another exception is that a school district must schedule the required number of days and hours in order to receive full state aid. But again, outside of the first day of school, the two breaks, and the required number of days and hours, the rest of the calendar is collectively bargained. Though I'd very much like to present the Board, parents, and students and community with a calendar. We're still working on it. We do not quite have an agreement, and therefore, the Board does have a right to what we'll call impose, I like the word inform a little bit better, inform the community on a month-to-month basis and of the school calendar. So tonight, we'll be asking you to approve an action item so that we may release what is the August and September portions of the school calendar. August, because it's only one day, it's August 31st, so if we go month-to-month, as is allowed, we would be really releasing September and the two county common calendar breaks, so that people can plan accordingly. Okay? And those dates are there.
When do we anticipate we'll have the entire calendar finalized?
Probably when we have an entire master agreement agreed to.
So it's, who knows?
Correct.
I know I'm getting a lot of inquiries as far as graduation for people trying to plan for next year.
Sunday, June 4th.
Is that in stone, or is that just a tentative date?
It is in-
It's always been a Sunday.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can-
Yes, Sunday, June 4th. But that's not part of the school calendar-
Oh, it's not.
-in terms of instructional days, professional development days, those things. So yes, you could say confidently that Sunday, June 4th confirmed that I'm right on the 4th. I believe that that's the date. But I don't want to mess up people's travel plans.
I'm sure it's June 5th.
Yeah, but we also got a-
The 4th.
The 4th?
All right, thank you.
Okay, Sunday, June 4th. All right.
Next item, 18 mil non-homestead renewal.
Very few, but very important set of slides to discuss with you tonight, so that, again, you can take action in your, in the action agenda. Michigan State Constitution. In 1978, the Headley Amendment was proposed and passed by the voters of the state of Michigan, and the Headley Amendment requires local governments to reduce voter-approved millage when property values in any given year is greater than or less than the, greater, greater than the lesser, excuse me, of the rate of inflation or 5%. So what the Headley Amendment did was to ensure that property values couldn't grow at such a fast rate that taxes would go accordingly up at a significant rate as well. It capped those property taxes. That was pre-Proposal A, and then Proposal A comes into effect in 1994 and says, requires an 18-mil levy on non-homestead property in order to receive full state aid. And I need to emphasize, in order to receive full state aid, and we'll hit on that again throughout the course of these few slides. Non-homestead property is industrial, commercial, second homes, and some agricultural property. It is the money that is locally collected here. It is not paid to Lansing, and then Lansing then redistributed. 18-mil non-homestead is collected locally, so you want to think of it as the first money in the kitty, all right? That's what we collect here, and then the state supplements that amount, depending on how much your non-homestead base is, your commercial base is, up to your foundation allowance. All voters in a school district, whether you have non-homestead property or not, are allowed to vote on this. So the majority of our community are homestead owners. Property owners, just their home. They don't own a business, it's not commercial property. It's not a second home. The overwhelming majority of our voters get to vote on, but do not pay this tax levy. This levy for our school district makes up approximately 14 million of our revenue toward the district's $40 million budget, or 35%. And again, that is the first $14 million in the kitty, okay? Headley rollback. This is something that, and speaking with President Bewar is brand-new to the East China School District. He did not remember a Headley rollback in the past, so we'll take a little bit of time. When growth on existing property indeed exceeds the rate of inflation or 5%, in this particular instance, I'm sure it's the lesser of the rate of inflation, okay? School districts are subject to a Headley rollback. We've been notified that we're going to have a Headley rollback, which we believe is, for the first time, of .2034 mils. That would reduce the 18-mil non-homestead levy to 17.7966, and subject the district to not receiving full state funding, because as you saw on the first slide, Proposal A says the state assumes that you will levy the full 18 mils, and if you don't, they're not going to make up the difference when they give you your, the remainder to meet your foundation balance. Districts in this position will often hold a special election to restore the 18 mils, but because, as last month, you passed a resolution to renew our 18, prior to us knowing we were going to get this rollback, so we still have time, it's important that this is good timing. We have the opportunity to pass a renewal or a new resolution tonight, based on a decision you will be asked to make. All right. A Headley hedge. Districts indeed may approve more than 18 mils for non-homestead purposes. So although it's often referred to as an 18-mil non-homestead, that's what you are, that's what you are required to levy, but you can approve any number that you want. So a district is not legally prevented from lev, from, although we're legally prevented from levying more than 18, we can approve more than 18. So the example there is, let's say, our district voters approve 19 mils for non-homestead purposes, and let's say we are notified of a .20 Headley rollback, very similar to the .20-
34.
34 that we had period, okay? But, sorry. The Headley rollback is applied to the voter-approved millage of 19 minus 2 point, .20 for 1818. 1818 becomes the new voter-approved millage, but the district is prevented by law from levying more than 18, but because 18.8 is the new approved amount, we can still levy our 18 mils and still receive full state funding. Okay? So, important points. Okay? A Headley rollback is new for the district, okay? It's likely that additional Headley rollbacks will occur, as the housing market appears to be the next sector of our economy that is rebounding. To receive full state aid, we must levy 18 mils on non-homestead property, all right? The majority of individuals who'll be voting on the proposal are homeowners that don't pay this levy. They pay the 6-mil homestead levy. The law prevents us from levying more than 18 mils, regardless of what is approved. An increase in the rate, the non-homestead rate, is not an increase in the levy, again, because we're only permitted to levy 18 mils, all right? And the non-homestead levy accounts for $14 million of our $40 million budget. So, two options that I have for you tonight. One is to pass a new resolution. The last resolution that you passed was to put on the ballot 18 mils, which unfortunately, if we put on the ballot and got passed, means that we wouldn't be able to levy because of the rollback, the full 18, we would not receive full funding, all right? So pass a new resolution so that what we do put on the ballot in November could be 18.2966. That number is because 182966, and the current rollback is .5, or half a mil. When you stay within half a mil, you can still use this word renewal in the ballot language. In essence, what you're doing is you're renewing the 17.7966 where your millage was when your approval, when your 10-year approval expired, this most recent 10-year expired, plus an extra half a mil to provide a hedge against future rollbacks. And for a period of nine years, and I'm going to go into that right now, normally, we have been in this district approving for 10 years. I'm going to suggest and recommend that we put on the ballot this non-homestead renewal figure for nine years, because from 2016 to 2009, you have to count 2016 as year one. It is inclusive. So 16 plus nine years gets us to 2024. That is, again, a national election in a November ballot, so in an effort to not spend additional monies in 2024, we wouldn't have to pay for an election. We would just go on the general election at that time, and it wouldn't cost the district additional monies to, in 2025, if we went out for 10 years, we'd now be looking at footing the bill just for a Headley election, and we don't want to do that, okay? The second option is to pass a new resolution to approve the non-homestead millage to 19 mils for nine years, providing a full one-mil hedge against future Headley rollbacks. So as you can see, this particular one, I think I have it here in my recommendation, if we were to approve tonight 182966, in other words, a half a mil against what the millage would expire at, all right, you would only have a 2966 hedge against future rollbacks. So for the next nine years, you would only have 2966 of millage to hedge, and this year's was 2.034, all right? So chances would be very good that we'd be very soon going for another, it would be called a Headley restoration, but we'd have to go out and we'd have to hold another election, all right? Option two is 19 mils for nine years, providing a full hedge, and I think that this addresses not only our current rollback by restoring it to 18, plus giving us a full one against any future, and in reality, if this is the first time that this has happened to the district, probably things will stabilize within the next couple of years. So we'd be looking at a three-to-four-year hedge against certain rollbacks until things stabilize, okay? So I'll be recommending to you tonight that we go with option two. It provides greater protection, again, against Headley rollbacks. It reduces the need for special elections, okay? And I will, and again, I put this slide back up again, because this will be what we'll be communicating consistently to our voters over the next three months, seven to 10, yeah, seven to 11, next four months. We will continue to communicate in every mechanism that we can, these simple points, okay? That we need to levy 18 in order to receive full funding, okay? That, in essence, 18 is what those who actually have to pay this millage, this levy is paying right now. We're not increasing their rate. We are increasing what is approved, but what can be levied would never be increased, okay? And the overwhelming majority of people who actually vote don't pay this levy either, all right? So, 1, 2, 3, 4, these seven bullet points kind of boil everything down that we're discussing tonight. We are asking that, I am asking that you, excuse me, that you take some discussion now and make a decision as to which of the two options are you in favor, and pass the resolution tonight, because in order to get on to the November ballot, we have to provide all the information by August 15th to the clerks, the state, the clerks and everybody who prints ballots and do all, does all that stuff, okay?
Discussion.
It makes sense to me to go with the 19 versus this smaller amount because of the three-to-four-year leeway it provides. If the following year, you get another .20 whatever hit, now you're already, you already in the following year have to go back and ask for a restoration.
Right. And we're seeing an increase, it's not because of the 5%, it's because of the exceeding rate of inflation. I think that the hit that our housing market and everything else took, and the commercial market that- market, that we're going to see that, that growth continue in their valuations, I would, I would assume. My thought, I, I agree, I think the nineteen is just the safer bet. We can only levy eighteen mils, but it protects us if, if there's another headly rollback coming down the pike.
I also agree, however, I think that in trying to communicate this to the public, it needs to be done in a different manner, because if I had not sat here and listened to Dr. Skalka's presentation, these important points would not, I would not be able to understand them as well as I do, and I'm, I'm trying to look at it from your regular citizen and taxpayer, and I think that we need to be very careful in how we present it to the public, so that there's full disclosure, there's no questions, that's my opinion.
Is that something that we could do?
I think we need to work on.
Right.
Because it is confusing, you're right.
It's very confusing.
It took me a long time to sit here, and I called, and, you know, just try and understand it.
Could we do, could we have Dr. Skalka do like a video, just this little, simple follow-up presentation? Well, you know, one of the things that, a couple of things, I'm sorry for interrupting, one of the thing, a couple of things that we could do here is, in the next couple of weeks before we really start campaigning hard, is just pull together some citizens and explain it to them, almost focus group with them, as to how, how they understand this.
Well, I also think some of the bullet point, points could be rewritten, so that's a little bit more understandable for the, you know, the typical taxpayer. Not everybody understands what a levy is versus a rate, and I think the fact that if we just simply say the law prevents us from charging more than eighteen mils, regardless of what's approved, that's just more in layman's terms, in my opinion.
Sure, okay.
I mean, we need to.
Non-Homestead, I don't think the general public really knows what non-Homestead is.
And who pays non-Homestead.
Yeah, and who pays it.
It needs to be as simple as it can possibly be.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, I think, I think number one, maybe the most important point is, this is not an increase.
Yes.
Correct.
I, I.
It sounds like an increase, but it's not an increase.
Yeah, it does.
So I, I think that maybe we could get together and just work on some of those.
Right. But short and sweet, and so, in layman's terms.
Yeah.
Because as Todd said, I had to, it was explained to me, but, you know, it's one of those things where it's explained to you, and you think you know it, and you walk out the room, and it's like.
Well, no. The initial thing might be, well, why are they asking for more money?
Exactly.
And that's the thing.
That's it.
Right, right.
And we're, we're not doing something that we're not required to do by the state.
Right.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
Yep.
And I like the idea that we're thinking forward into the future, that when this is going to be renewed, it's going to be during a presidential election year, and that we aren't spending taxpayers' money to have a special election. I think that's, that's a good idea.
Great.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jeanie, I think more layman's terms.
Mr. Kinnick-Bauer, either way?
I support the, the, the full-mil hedge, and Mrs. Frank alluded to bullet point number six. I think without, without the understanding ahead of time, bullet point number six is one of the most troublesome ones up there, that it just, it wouldn't make sense to me if I didn't understand it first, that would not help.
Okay.
To communicate.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if the word is collect, charge, or whatever, instead of levy, but we can work that out.
It could just be rewritten altogether.
Well, we've, we've put these bullet points together in kind of a very short Q and A that we want to include, that we want to include in the summer newsletter mailing, and before we do that, we will get that out to you for your review in the next few days.
Okay.
Maybe bullet point number three, as I'm looking at this again, I, I think that's really important, the general public needs to know, in order for us to receive our state funding, we have to levy eighteen mils.
Correct.
You know, I.
Right, on home, right.
And that, yeah, and not, but again, I think that's important, maybe that needs to be moved up there, you know, and explain what non-Homestead is, and.
Right, and then you can go, right, and then you go into.
And then maybe you could have some sub-points, but, you know, you don't want to have tons of.
It needs to be condensed.
Right.
And simplified.
You don't want to lose them.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda are board action items. Recommended action, per administration recommendation, the Board of Education approved the resolution calling for the Michigan legislation to hold public hearings on the Michigan education finance study that commissioned as presented and read.
So moved.
Support.
Can I ask a quick question, too?
Yes.
So when we do this, this resolution then is sent to our legislators, how's that work?
Well, if approved, we will ask those in favor to sign, to sign it tonight, and then tomorrow, I will be sending it to our legislators and all of the members of both the House and Senate Education Committee.
I appreciate that we're doing this, I think it's important.
It's very important.
I mean, we're, we're talking about a thousand dollar, more than a thousand dollars per pupil that we're, that we're underfunded, according to this report.
Steve, have you had a superintendent's meeting since this report's come out? Have you talked to other superintendents? Are they going to be asking to do the same thing of their boards?
We, we have not had one.
Okay.
Since the report came out, but I have been in contact with Chris Weigent, who's the executive director of the State Superintendents Association.
Okay.
And let him know that we were contemplating this, and he was both very exciting and very, very excited and very encouraging that we would do this and ask that. He receives a copy of the resolution as well.
Okay.
Great. I'll read the resolution, you have a copy up in your packet, have any questions, let's address it now. Whereas the Michigan legislation commissioned a study of education finance as part of the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget, and whereas the firm of Augen, Blech, Pollock and Associates were awarded the contract to determine the sufficient resources per pupil to provide a public education that enables a pupil to demonstrate successful completion of necessary credits in terms of proficiency, and whereas it was also required that the report determined if school districts received funds in the fashion that ensures that all students have an equal opportunity to become proficient. And whereas the report was delivered and made public on June twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, and whereas the report's findings included, the basic cost of education is being underfunded, a recommendation of eight thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars per pupil while Michigan currently appropriates seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one. Confirmation that state education funding is not adequate, equitable, and negatively impacts our most needy students. The resources available to at-risk and ELL students are far below the recommended resources currently available for districts in many other states. Ensuring that districts have an appropriate level of resources to serve at-risk and ELL students, a vital part of giving all students the opportunity for academic success. The state must work toward eliminating the gap of funding disparity in our state while ensuring the students that need the help mostly have the resources available to them. The formulas for determining special needs funding are not generating enough revenue. Results show that there was significantly more variation in per-pupil revenues and expenditures across the districts than in desirable for an equitable school finance system, and not pursuing equity at the expense of higher-spending districts. Therefore, be it resolved that the East China School District Board of Education hereby calls upon the Michigan legislator to take this report that they themselves commissioned seriously and begin to hold public hearings immediately, signed on the twenty-fifth day of July. Members of the East China School District Board of Education.
Okay, very good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, so carry.
Thank you very much, we'll get it out tomorrow.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, and, and please send that link back out.
Yes.
If you would, thank you. Item B, recommended action, per administration recommendation, the Board of Education imposes the August and September two thousand sixteen calendar, consistent with the requirements of the Public Employee Relation Act, the St. Clair County Common Calendar, and reflecting the last offer of school district and collective bargaining with the East China Education Association as presented in the superintendent's report.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Frank?
Support.
Support by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, so carry. Recommended action, per administration recommendation, the Board of Education approves the resolution calling for election and approval of ballot language requesting nineteen mils for the purpose of non-Homestead property tax collection for a period of nine years. It reads as, or as, pursuant to the Michigan election law, the district's regular school election shall be held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November of even years. It is necessary to conduct the district's regular election on Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand sixteen, to fill one of more board, more, one or more board positions. On or before four P.M. on Tuesday, August sixteenth, the board shall certify any ballot proposition to be submitted to the voters at such election, to the election coordinator or coordinators designated to, to district, to, to conduct the elections within the district, the election coordinator. Now therefore be it resolved that the regular school election of the East Chi, East school, pardon me, the schools election, regular school election of the school electors of the district be called and held on Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand sixteen. The proposition to be voted on at the regular school election shall be stated on the ballots and substantially the form as set forth in Exhibit A. The election coordinator is requested to utilize the Times Herald, a newspaper published or of general circulation within the district, for publication notices in accordance with the election law requirements. Utilize ballot proposition summary information as prepared by legal counsel in the forms of the notices of last day of registration and election in the form as set forth in Exhibit B here, attached here, too. Provide a copy of the ballot to the district and its legal counsel in sufficient time to allow the ballot to be proofread prior to printing. The secretary of this board is hereby authorized and directed to file a copy of this resolution with the election coordinator and with any election clerk or clerks designated to conduct elections with, in the district by four P.M. on Tuesday, August sixteenth, two thousand sixteen. All resolutions and parts of resolutions, insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, be and the same are hereby rescinded. All those in favor signify by saying.
I don't think we had a motion yet, I'm sorry.
Oh.
We need a motion in a second.
Oh, we did.
We did.
We did.
Mrs.
No, we did.
Okay, so who, I'm sorry.
She's so moved, and I supported her.
Mrs. Frank and Mrs. Murphy.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, I apologize.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, so carry. Item nine is closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, that the board of, recommended action, that the Board of Education goes into closed session pursuant to Section eight C of the Open Meetings Act, Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, that being for board discussion connected with the negotiations of collective bargaining agreement. We'll call vote, Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bebuck?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick-Bauer?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Distorah?
Yes.
Yes. So move, we will move into closed session. When we come back out, item ten is items for next regular board meeting, the annual report, and summer school report, we will then have adjournment and open session. Thank you, have a blessed evening.
Thank you.